Hello and welcome, everybody. This is absolutely mind-boggling that so many people would come out and join us with this. What we're gonna do, we're gonna start off with just a couple of short presentations, and then we're gonna turn the whole evening, rest of the afternoon, over to you guys. Okay? Because we wanna hear what you have to say. Because I know you guys have had experiences. And when we get done with that, then we'll have a question-and-answer session. But I want you to know, the footprints you followed in today were this guy right here. Go ahead, could you lift that up, Barb? He lives in the Blue Mountains. He's nine foot, three inches tall, and his foot is seventeen inches long. That print was cast, recorded by Paul Freeman back in the nineteen, mid-1980s. And I got it from Paul recently, just before he died. As those of you might not know, Paul, he had an encounter in 1982 that he got on film, not very good. But then he had another one in 1992 that was actual, and you can see it on YouTube any day. Paul was a writer for the Forest Service in the Waldo-Waldo Watership, Mill Creek Watership. And it's about seventy-some thousand acres of land that he patrolled to keep cattle and livestock and people out of. And so we have a lot of time to research. There's a book out, if you can find it, called Bigfoot of the Blues, written by Vance Orchard, at Chronicles Paul's events and West Summerlands and several other people. The book is out of print, has been for thirty years. But we're doing a redo of it now. We hope to have it out by summer, maybe fall. Depends on how my motivation goes. But we have the original book. We've transcribed it to electronic media, so we can work with it. We would like to start with a short presentation by our friend Barb Hartman on audio. And if there's... Anybody has any questions, she's the person to ask. Barb, thank you.
I don't know about that being the person to ask. I'm, you know what, I'm so brand-new, honestly, at this. My name is Barb Hartman. I live here with my husband Randy and my son Travis, my daughter-in-law Von. We, our family moved to Washington State in 2012?
Oh, no.
Yeah.
Thirteen.
Oh, 2013. And we moved to our current house in 2017. Can everybody hear me okay? Okay. We moved to our current house in 2017. We're on the, we live on the Puget Sound, the southern part in Pierce County. And in April, about seven months after we moved in, in April of 2018, we, my husband actually found eighteen-inch footprints under our house. And that was the first, you know, actual concrete evidence. And he is much more of a skeptic than I ever was. It's always been a, you know, a topic that fascinated me. But I guess I can't really, I never dreamed that we would have them living, you know, kind of in our backyard.
What, what town is this close to?
We are near, just south of Gig Harbor, like on the Key Peninsula? Yeah, okay, all right. Let me look at my notes. So, so since, since finding those footprints, it's just been ongoing, you know, evidence, signs. One of the first things is we found a big tree break right next to our house. Literally like, what would you say, Randy, like fif-
Forty.
About forty feet from the house. And then shortly thereafter, they, so that tree break, which is about fifteen feet, I guess, off the ground, perfectly healthy tree. There was no, no, you know, wind, no any, no storms, this break. Then about, maybe ten days later, we noticed that they had taken another one. I'm assuming the Sasquatch people had taken another one. This was a skinny, like I believe they call it an aspen tree, maybe? Took it and bent it down, so it was under the original tree break. So it created like a perfect X. And that kind of then blocked our view into the, into the forest. So I think that, I've been told that maybe they use that as a blind, kind of. As far as I've been huffed at, I've been grunted at. I was hit with infrasound twice, just one time, but within five minutes of each other. And it only lasted very briefly. As soon as I got back onto my property line, it stopped. And, and I had, I had no effect, side effects after that whatsoever. What my, I didn't know that it was infrasound at the time. I had literally just been like huffed, grunted at, within maybe ten feet. And I thought maybe it was my adrenaline, you know, that was kind of like, oh, my gosh. And I didn't know, am I having a stroke, a heart attack, what's going on? Because I was so just dizzy, vertigo, just disoriented. I think, though, in hindsight, that they just wanted to get me out of there because it was an area that there was babies or juveniles, you know, little ones there, and I was getting too close. And I think that's why. They didn't want to hurt me, they just wanted me to, you know, leave. I've seen many at this point, now through my camera lens. I've seen four with my naked eyes. The last one was in August of 2023. I was kind of just scanning over, about eight o'clock at night, scanning over the side yard and the tree line where a lot of times I can kind of see movement. I didn't see anything, so I thought there was a bush, like a big bush, hanging over, just right up, right off the wood line. And I thought, oh, I'm just gonna take my phone in there and just stick it in, kind of. And there was a, I'm gonna guess, seven-foot one sitting, crunched up. Oh, my gosh, it was, sorry, just like still makes me, you know what I mean? Like, he was six feet from me. And I just was like, I screamed, I, I, we met eyes, he immediately went down. And like that, and I just ran into the house, I couldn't believe. I mean, and that would've been a perfect opportunity, right, to get a video, to get a photo, but I just was too startled. I shocked him, I'm sure as much as he shocked. Because he, like I said, he immediately went down, which I thought was so cute. So I'm gonna, I'll describe, like, he, to me, like, he looked like Chewbacca. Was it an Auburn color, maybe, black mixed in? He had very long hair hanging down from his arms. And that's really all that I saw. The other, well, the other very distinguishable, like, attribute to that I can remember is that he looked like his, like he had white patches around his eyes. I don't know if his hair was white, or if that was white skin. But it was very, you know, like, wow, I just, I remember that. And, but like I said, when we, when I looked at him, he immediately went down. Look, he's put his face down. He was standing, crunched up, like with both of his knees, you know. So that was great, great, but still, just, you know. Kind of shakes me up. All right, let me see, where am I at? Oh, I've been, so I've been pretty successful at capturing audio on our home security cameras. They're just regular Arlo IR cameras. How I started is that it, we, I started to get, this was in December, let me think of the year, what that would've been, like twenty-two, or twenty, twenty-two. I started to get like twenty notifications, movement notifications overnight. And, and I would go back and try to see what paused the movement, and there wouldn't be anything. And I thought, is this maybe the Sasquatch that's doing this? So I, I figured out then that I could actually turn on, on the camera to watch. I watched through an app on my phone. So now what I do, then what I started to do, I was just started to, from the hours of like midnight to about three-thirty in the morning. Not every night, obviously, but I try to several, several nights a week. I'll just go, almost like round-robin on the four cameras, just to see if I hear anything. It's, that's dependent on like weather conditions. If it's raining, it's gonna be too noisy, you know. This would be like a clear, you know, like a, like a not windy night. Also, some nights, then, because we're right on the Puget Sound, the water's really loud, too, so not a good, not conducive for making recordings. But, so, let's see. And what I do is I immediately, when I open the app to, and to open the camera, I immediately press record. So I can, which, you know, leaves me with a lot of hours of audio, but I, that's just how, like I said, that's how I've been successful. Let me see. So today I brought, I think like some of the best audio that I have. I have a lot. I'm so blessed, really. I feel so blessed to be able to do this. I've recorded grunting, growling, whistling, screaming, cooing. But lately, it seems to be like, there's almost like a pattern of speech to it. I know that they know that I'm watching them, because it's not uncommon for me to, seconds after I turn the camera on, there'll be like a little, like they're throwing, you know, like a pebble or a pine cone or something at the camera. So it's funny, it's cute. Sometimes they'll turn, I think that they're, they'll turn the picture off, or they'll turn the, the audio off on the camera, you know, even though they're still, so there's something they don't want me to hear from my monitor, or, or see, or whatever. So hopefully, I have my Bluetooth speaker on. Let's see if there's anything. Some of these recordings, I was able to have run through a spectrogram. I don't know how to do it, but a friend of mine. And he's also the one, I think, that has amplified a lot of this. Because obviously, you know, the raw audio, you're not gonna get all those, the sounds. But yes, so I was able to run the, you know, or he ran it through a spectrogram. So that tells you that it's above, these recordings are, are outside of the range of what, human or animal, which is, I believe, about six hundred hertz. About six hundred hertz for typical animals and humans, it would be under that.
Six hundred, six hundred, seven hundred.
Yeah, so these are, these are, yeah, have been confirmed.
They go to fifty K.
Yeah. Have been confirmed to be above that. Okay, so I'm just gonna play them in order, for the, from the oldest to the most recent. My first one is from June nineteenth through July first. It's a series, a short series of three recordings in one. It's separated by tone. I'm gonna see if I can stop them between. The entire recording is, is only two minutes, but like I said, I, the first part, you're gonna hear some high-pitched screeching and what kind of sounds like a lion's roar, almost. So. Get that up and hopefully. Okay. So that was the first part. The second part gets, it's a little bit more exciting, that was kind of lame. The second, the second part has a whistle. This is like they're, like they got together and did all the sounds, you know? There is a whistle, there is one bark. There is several, almost like coos, and different calls, like in different tones and pitches. And then there's also a deep grunt and, and like a, like a cough. So the third part of this, which is the most interesting, this is when I realized that they can mimic frogs perfectly well, tree frogs. I mean, this is, sounds like two or more tree frogs communicating with a bigfoot. That's, that's really, that's, this is, this is the most interesting of the, of the three. There's also, there's also a two-tone whistle, and I don't know if you're gonna be able to hear it, but it's, this is so interesting. It's like a, and then immediately, like off, the, the one that's, the second one, though, is off in the distance, and it's really hard to hear. But I just couldn't, that really, like, wow, it's so human, so human sounding. So the sec, does anybody have any questions on that?
Sounds like we're talking to each other.
Yes, right, that's exactly what, yeah.
I will tell you, your up-down whistle, I was, back in the early seventies, I was hearing that a lot.
Really?
I was having to hike in to do my bridge work. And I'd sit there and do a drop before I hiked out, and I'd hear that.
Wow.
And I heard a long time, I just thought it was a bird I hadn't identified. And then, listen to Ron Moorhead tapes, chap, uh, track seven, it's on there. I found out, that means, you know, I've got my eye on the big guy over here, so.
Oh, okay.
Yeah. The hairless one's mine, you know?
And like, to me, it sounded like it was one that was, you know, like, hey, here I am, and then the other one was like, oh, here I am.
Yep, that's what they're doing, just letting one know the way.
Yeah, yeah.
Where was that recording taken?
This was at, at our house, on one of our security cameras, just outside. It's our, like, our carport, we call it the carport. We live on the Key Peninsula in Pierce County, so, yeah.
Do you have any close neighbors?
We have one set of close neighbors, but that's it. It's really, yeah.
There's a four-hundred acre farm that goes to our south or to our west.
Yeah.
And the trees are anywhere from sixty to ninety feet all around us.
Yeah.
It's really desolate.
Yeah. So that, let's see. The next one I have is from August ninth of 2023. This one is interesting, because it has a higher pitched, almost like a cooing sound, I would say. I don't know, let me, tell me what you think, like, maybe a female or a juvenile, possibly? And it seems to be communicating with the other one. But this one's, it sounds like a cross between like a horse and a gorilla. Now, I know that we have, you know, there's the farm, like my husband said, but we're not close enough to any of the farm animals to have any sort of, you know, ambient noise. We also, with the security cameras, it sets up a perimeter around our house. So if any of this was just like regular wildlife, which we do catch on the, you know, on the cameras, we would, we would see it. So this, most, with the exception of the last one that I played, the rest of them, I've caught these on our, on our deck cameras. It's either the side deck or the, or our lower deck. So, I mean, that's just right, it's, so it's close, you know, it's very close to the house. This one is one minute and forty-eight seconds. Anybody have questions or comments on that?
That was really cool.
Yeah.
And that was one of them that I did have a spectrogram done, because I wanted to know if that, that cooing, and it is, it's, it's outside of the, the normal range. Because I don't know what it could be, but it isn't an animal or a human.
I, I have one note that covers five octaves from them.
Yes.
That, that.
That's just incredible.
There are people who can cover five octaves, but not in one note.
Yes.
I don't know if anybody can cover three in one note. But, yeah, I have a spectrogram with five octaves.
That is just incredible.
Yeah.
So the, let's see. The third one I have is from October twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-three. This is, this is, this one's humorous. On this night, I believe that two or more were, they were trying to mimic ducks. And they were doing a very bad job of it. Or they were like, I don't, I can't do this, and I don't wanna do this. So you'll hear, it's kind of like they start and then like they just give up. In the middle, there's also that, like that adult male who seems to be almost prompting them, or like, I don't know. This is, this is, this is funny, though, that, anyway. Here, I'll like, I'll play that again. It is funny. I, I heard that quite frequently prior to that, and I was so glad that I got a recording of it.
What time was that recording taken?
Uh, let me see. I'm gonna say probably, I, I don't, I don't know, I have to look at the, all these are between midnight and like three-thirty AM, so, yeah, I don't know. I could let you know after, I'd have to look to see.
Yeah, that's fine.
Yeah, yeah, but that's.
You need during the daytime?
No, the only one that I got during, I only have one during the day. And it was, this is the one that sounded almost like an alarm, or like a car alarm. It was, it, it, I, I don't, I don't know. I, and I let my husband even like heard it, and I said, like, or is this like the noise from a truck or something? And he said, no, definitely not. I think what was happening is that there was a garbage truck, and there was some construction vehicles that were driving in, like through our area. And I believe that maybe one of them is watching during the day and was alerting, you know, the clan, because you can hear this, I don't, I don't have it with me, but, but. I have a Facebook page, No Drama Bigfoot and Encrypted, so if you, you know, if you wanna go on there, I put most of my, and I also have a, just a real small YouTube channel of the same name. But I'm not very good with technology, so I just, you know, don't.
But what do you use to record them with?
I just, I just use, it, it's through my phone, it's through the cameras. And it's just an app on my phone, that's it. They're just Arlo.
Does it have a security camera, was that a microphone or a monitor?
Yeah, it has a microphone, they're infrared, so, yeah.
Does that sound like close?
Yeah, and, and, and the thing is that it is, it is. I mean, now, these are amplified and enhanced, but it is close. There was one night that I got, did you wanna say something here?
I was gonna say, a pitch bar deck in the woods is maybe twenty to thirty feet. So, and then it's very desolate. It's, it's dangerous. It's dangerous. And trees are, you know, two, three people across this, this area all around us. So it's, they're super close.
Yeah.
Yeah.
You can't see it.
Right.
I mean, she said about the, the branches that broke down. She asked me to clear a little area there, and that cleared it, and then that.
Yeah, they broke the, they broke the tree, yeah, they didn't like that. And I'll tell you, one night, there was one or two nights that I had to actually stop recording, like listening. I didn't stop recording, but it scared me, because it sounded so close. Like I believe they were, like, either up on the deck or, and, and the, and the male, there was a male, that male that's, that I hear so often, and he did not sound happy. And I was almost like, oh, I can't listen to this, like this is, because it's happening live. And I was just like, oh, gosh, this is scary. But nothing, there's, there was, you know, there's nothing, no damage, no, no evidence, it's just, I don't know.
Have you ever seen him through the window?
No, 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 not yet. I, I kind of not.
That's fun.
I'm not ready yet, I'm not ready yet.
I think he'd be glued there with.
That is kind of my fear. Okay, so the next, let me see. All right. The next one, this is another, this is a short one. This is from December fourth of 2023. This is, this one sounds like, like a conversation, or there's a pattern of speech between, I'd say, adult males probably, with very deep voices. There is also some high-pitched, like tweets or whistles kind of mixed in. So I'll, yeah, I'll play that for you.
I wonder what they were saying, did you?
Yeah, yeah. What I discovered recently is that they make a noise that I thought, because we're running, we're doing a lot of renovations on our house. And I thought they were taking, like, blocks of wood that we just had, like spare, spare, you know, blocks, and maybe hitting something or clacking the wood together. But it's actually a noise.
A noise?
Yes, that the, that the male is, one of the males are making. And so a guy that has been, that has been doing my, the, some of the audio lately, he said, you know, he's like, please send those to me, because he said, that's where, he said, that the speech pattern is developing. So what I'm hearing is just like a, like wood together, but it's actually, yeah, it's actually him, so. And he said this is like a whisper, like whispered conversation. They know that I'm listening, so they're gonna keep, you know, they're gonna keep their voices down.
We've taken those creatures, slowed them way down, I mean, way down. And in the bottom, there's way better too.
Wow.
So they're actually communicating.
Yes. Yeah. There's one that I wanna, I, I have to have, one that I got pretty recently. That, it's, it really seems like it's some words, and I, and I really need to have somebody, you know, listen to it that can manipulate it, and it's just fascinating. So the last one I have today, this is from April. it and it's just fascinating. So the last one I have today, um, this is from April third, twenty twenty four. So just, you know, about a month ago, um, this one I believe to be the alpha male. He's the one that I, is the very first one that I heard and he's the one that is either the alpha male or he's the one that interacts most vocally. Um, he's the very distinctive sound, he's very loud. He's the one that will come, I, you know, up to the cam, one of the cameras and, and just very loud. He was the one that scared me the night that I had to put the, hold the phone away that I couldn't listen. Um, he always sounds like he has like a sinus infection or bronchitis, um, and I, I hear him the most often. This is really short, it's seventeen seconds. So, um, if you need me to.
That's a greeting.
Yes, is it really? Because I felt like, like he was, he knew, you know, that I was listening and, oh, that's so cool. And that's also, I don't, all right, I've never had any, um, like examples yet, or, or what, what I would feel like mind, you know, speak or telepathy, but this night I was, um, just, you know, laying in bed, watching the cameras and right, and I don't know, you know, if you guys believe it or not, I mean, whatever, like I, I'm just telling you, this is what happened. It was so weird. Um, and I'm laying there and I'm thinking, I wonder if they'll ever try to communicate with me. Um, and immediately I got this picture in my mind. It said Mont, like the words Mont. And then I thought, like, wait, am I, and then I heard Mont, but not my voice. And it wasn't, it was almost like, I don't even know, I don't even remember the, maybe like a robotic voice, I don't know, but it wasn't my voice. Um, and so I, I thought, wait, is that, like, are you trying to commu- because then immediately when that came on and I said, Mont, are you trying to communicate me with me? Is that, is that your name? Is when I got, um, you know, this guy, like. So, um, yeah, and I listened for a little bit longer. That was, that original audio was about three minutes long, but it was kind of like there was a lot of nothing. Um, then I listened for another ten minutes and, uh, you could hear him periodically, but again, it's was, it's not worth, you know. Um, but then I was again laying there questioning, oh my gosh, is this my imagination? Did this really happen? Is somebody, are you trying to communicate with me? Turned back on the, another camera and I got an immediate like huh response. So that was, I guess, Mont. So that's, yes.
Have you ever, I got here late, so.
No, that's fine.
Have you ever smelled them like, because I've heard that everybody that sees them smells like that.
Um, it, did you hear me say that I got really close to one?
No.
Um, he was about six feet away and he was in, in bushes and it was, it was dark out and I kind of was just recording on my phone. And when I, I stuck my phone in the, in these bushes and he was sitting in there and, um, shocked, scared the heck out of me and him too. Um, I didn't smell anything from him. We have occasionally, um, I've, I've smelled, you know, like a garbage smell, like a soup, like rot, bad sewage, but it's very fleeting. I don't know, you know, I don't know if it's them. As for, as much, as far away as I've seen them, as many as I've seen them, they're usually about, there's, um, like maybe sixty to eighty yards is what I'm seeing them from. Um, I haven't had any smells, but there is a smell that smells like wild honeysuckle that I'll get. And there shouldn't be, there's no honeysuckle that's blooming. So I just got that the other day when I went into the area to say hello to them.
Those bad smells, that's a defense mechanism. It's just the same with vultures. Have you ever walked up on a vulture or something?
Vultures, yeah.
Oh, yeah. Okay. You know, I'd do it twice if you can help. That's the same thing. They do the same thing with that.
So that's all I have. Thank you.
Are you near the ocean?
Yes. I'm sorry. Uh, let me just, she, I had a question down here. She asked me if I was near the ocean. I'm, I'm real, the pugit sound, you know, so.
Do they swim in the ocean?
I think that they, I definitely think they go in and get, I mean, why, you know, shellfish and.
Fish, something.
And, yeah, because there's definitely an area. I've heard that they do, but I haven't seen that. I, you know, I know they can swim, so, they say, anyway. So what was the other question I'm?
Do you ever walk in the woods and stand out like, sit back and try to?
No, no, I haven't.
Are you about three?
A little bit by my.
I'll overdo it.
You know what I do is that I, um, I go out to the area that I, I mean, it's, it's close to my house. This is very close. Um, so I'll go out there and I go out about, um, like when I know that they're not quite sleeping yet, they say, like around ten thirty, eleven, and I'll just announce myself and I say hello to everybody. I'll kind of take some videos with my phone and take some pictures and say, if anybody wants to, to, you know, look up, show up for me, please do. Um, and that's how I, that's how I've been able to get some pretty decent photos and videos. Um.
Do you take food out, bananas, oranges?
You know, occasionally I will not, I would, but I don't want to feed them because I feel like that's, I don't want them to, you know, to become dependent on it.
I don't think you just should have told them.
I don't know. But so what I, what I have done, I've taken oranges out. They do not like oranges. They'll just, they sat, they just sat and, and, you know, brought it away till I, they don't like oranges. What was that? What was that? Yeah, 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 yeah. Then they'll be knocked, then they will be looking in my windows. They like, I took some Granny Smith apples out. They seem to like that. Um, and no, the other, the other thing, and this was kind of cute, I took a loaf of French bread out. Um, it was kind of like, just had reached, it wasn't stale, but it was a little bit, you know, and I'm like, whatever, instead of throwing it out or whatever. And my husband doesn't know this because he'd be like, I'll eat it. But I took it out and what was cute was that, uh, the next day it was gone. Everything was gone, the bag, and it was gone. So I'm like, okay, I don't know what happened, you know. I mean, it could have been, realistically, could have been another animal. Who knows, you know. But when I bet, went two days after that, there was the bag laying in the area, which I call kind of like the gifting area, um, with a rock on top. So now something took that and then brought the bag back.
They want more?
Yeah.
Fill it up again.
Yeah. Yeah. So like I said.
Remember, leaving them an apple is like having a Thanksgiving dinner at our house and serving.
Yeah. Yeah. I try to, I, I, I try to leave, like, I'll leave like a, you know, quite a few. But it's also interesting to note that, you know, you leave a certain amount, like, let's say you leave twelve and then they take half and leave the rest. And then I'll say, no, these are all, you know, for you.
Quite common.
Yeah, yeah.
Do you have those cameras on where you put the food out to see?
No, I don't, I don't. No, because that's kind of, that's, um, in further into the woods, which is where, um, I'll go into, you know, into the woods. It just borders my property and that's where all, where I see this. Um, so I kind of, like I said, call it the gifting area. I, the other thing, quickly, I'll just like Mardi Gras beads. They had no, they, I hung those in the trees. They just ignored them like a, um, there, I will, that, right now I have like a li- an old, uh, little wooden doll that's out there and, uh, sparkly like hair bow, uh, from when our daughter was in cheerleading. And they moved that around, but they haven't taken it. Oh, one thing that they did take, this is kind of cute, it was little tiny miniature like, um, yellow ducks. And I put three out and two were gone. And then there was one that was still there, you know, still there. And I said, you honestly, these are for you. You can have it. And then it was gone and I haven't seen any of them. So that's it.
All right. Thank you. That was great. All right. I was gonna, let me see if I can do this. This is not working well for me here. Ah. Okay. I'm only gonna take a very short time here, but there's a little thing I wanted everybody to know here because we see so many pictures. Is it real? Is it not? Okay. I'm gonna give you one thing, one little tool here to be able to tell almost instantly. And it's called intermembral index. And the intermembral index is a, it's an anatomical constant taught in college. Okay. And it's the ratio of your arm length to your leg length. In humans, that ratio is seventy two. Okay. My arm is twenty-one and three quarters inches long. My leg is thirty-three inches long. You divide twenty-one and a quarter by thirty-three and it comes out to seventy-one point nine seven something. So rounds up to seventy-two. All humans fall in that range. Now, does that mean every human's gonna have exactly seventy-two, seventy-two, um, IMI? No, that's gonna put you in the center of the bell curve and then within three cent deviations will be ninety-eight percent of the population, every, the last two percent being outside that. Now, if we go from there, look at our hairy friends. This is Patty from Patterson-Giblinfield. Look at hers. Her arm length, as measured there, is two point seven, three seven five. Arm length, leg length is on the right. You divide those out, eighty-four. Sasquatch IMI is eighty-four. Bear, that's an even one hundred. Their front legs are exactly as long as their hind legs. What about giants? This is Andre the Giant. His IMI, seventy-two. What about dwarfs? Dwarfism, same thing. IMI is seventy-two. How about aliens? But what about other primates? Correlas, a hundred and twenty. Their arms are longer than their legs by twenty percent. Chimpanzees, a hundred and five. So how does that help us? A few years ago, some people came to BBC and said, we've got the expose, gonna deny the Patterson-Giblin film one hundred percent. So they built this suit, spent thousands of dollars making it, put a guy in it, took a film of it, and if it did anything, it helped to prove the Patterson-Giblin film because look at his IMI, seventy-two. Look at hers, eighty-four. Then there was a fellow who said, I was the person in that suit, remember? Bob Hieronymus. Number one, that suit looks, got more wrinkles in it than a fat man's chin. And does that look anything like Patty? And look at the IMI, seventy-two. Harley Hoffman's video, IMI, eighty-four. Marble Mountain video, IMI, eighty-four. Independence Day footage, where she comes out, picks up her baby and walks off, IMI, eighty-four. NVT, NUVT footage, measured that out, IMI, seventy-two. It's fake. Jacob's figure, IMI, one hundred. It's a bear. So in summation, you can take any picture and use this little fact on it, then just measure it, any, any units. It can be inches, tenths of inches or yards or miles, as long as that ratio comes out to eighty-four, this Sasquatch. Okay. Or it's a very good fake of a first Sasquatch, which you know is not human. All right. So there's a couple more I'm still working on. Actually, the one on the right, I have found a clear enough shot. That's the, um, Paul Freeman video and that is eighty-four. The one on the left, I can't get a clear enough shot. That's the, uh, end of, uh, Movado Day footage. And I can't get a clear enough shot to tell for sure on that one yet. But I'm still working on it. So final summation, if you've got a question, go to IMI. And this particular one, again, seventy-two. Okay. This is all in my book, Sasquatch the Proof, available here or available through, uh, Amazon. Okay. Any questions? Nope. Gee, I did good, didn't I? Thank you. Okay. Now, we'd like to turn it on and open it up to you. And I'd like to ask Barb to start because Barb, Barb had a statement and they were talking about what they saw and how they sounded like, you know, got too grumpy or growly. Tell us about the five hundred pound owl.
Uh, we were camping down by Carson, uh, about six years ago. There was a group of us and it was, it was kind of a rainy, ugly weekend and we were gathered around our, our damp little fire and, and enjoying ourselves as best we could. And it got dark and the owls started going off. There were several owls and they were really, really big owls, the kind that echo through the forest. And, uh.
Then all at once went.
Yeah.
Yeah, he kind of showed up. Okay.
It's gonna work.
Who's got a story they'd like to share? It's your time now.
Barb and I, it was, she, um, and I got similar glyphs, right Barb? Like, when you're an hour, I guess apart, um, my glyph was, uh, they made it look like our, our house, like the, and the floors and like the sticks sticking out, like the decks that stick out. And did you see it? Did you see mine, Barb? And then I seen yours?
I think I saw yours and said, wait a minute, I have one just like that.
Yes.
Yeah. It's pretty cool about my house.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's a glyph.
Mike?
How about we can tell, Tom, what a glyph, what's, what's a glyph?
A glyph is exactly that. It, uh, you've heard hieroglyphs? Okay. It's, it's a form of stick writing, like the Icelandic runes. Okay. And they communicate, but, uh, my crazy Canadian partner and his now wife and I did a five-year study on glyphs mainly in BC. And we had like twenty-five thousand pictures of glyphs, uh, in that five years. But they actually communicate. There's a written language for them. Uh, eventually I found they made one for me so that I knew when they were communicating with me. I was in BC, found a glyph and understood. I was in Oregon, uh, two, three weeks later, sat down in my chair and there it is, right between my feet. Same glyph. So they can communicate long distances and do the same thing. But they're like pictographs. They can, they, uh, actually make a picture and using, in PC, they used all peeled sticks and pick, and sticks don't peel natural. Then they have to be done. Yeah. Yeah, it's quite a, quite a subject. I get nervous.
Where do you think they live? Like caves or?
They live wherever they want to, uh, but, uh, I'm not gonna tell them I can't, but, but, no, any kind of shelter. It doesn't have to be a deep cave. It can just be a, a hole cut up. Um, again, the book that I mentioned earlier, uh, Bigfoot and the Blues talks about finding their, their, uh, camps, their, their living spaces.
Yes.
Under cutout banks and such like that. And I, I found them that way. But if the weather's decent, they just stay outside. They don't have any problem with that. And they're not strictly nocturnal. I've seen a few at night, but I guarantee you, of, of all of those I've seen, most of them have been in daylight. Because I don't go out at night. You know, and, uh, yeah. But, uh, I find them to be the most fascinating creatures on earth. I will tell you that. I've been doing this for sixty-five years.
What was the biggest one you've ever saw?
Biggest one I've ever seen is the, uh, clan leader in the area in BC where, where we did our research. He's twelve foot tall. But I know of one that's fifteen foot tall in Oklahoma. Uh, my friend Arla lives there and on her land there. She has a fifteen footer that lives there. And his son. And his son, Forstner, is now the mate of the clan leader in B.C.'s daughter. Uh, again, that's, that's an interesting story. When they go to, when it's time for them to mate, they understand that population is very low. It's a small population.
How many would you think there are?
In the state of Washington, there's about three hundred. There's twenty-one clans that I've identified and thirteen to eighteen per clan. So it's right at three hundred in the state of Washington. Probably ten to fifteen thousand in the U.S., maybe twenty thousand in North America. And that's all. So when they, it's time to mate, they understand that breeding too close is not good. So that's what they do. They have meetings semiannually, and it'll come up at that meeting, so-and-so is ready to take a mate who's available for mating. And Roger Say in B.C. was ready to take a mate. She went to his land in Oklahoma to meet, and then they come back to her clan to live. That's, that's the way they work. I'm gonna tell you this right now, they're more intelligent than we are. They don't wanna have anything to do with us. That proves that right there, you know?
What do they eat?
Pardon me?
What, what do they eat? They eat like deer?
They could, they eat deer, they eat vegetable, anything we can eat, they can eat, and potatoes and things I wouldn't eat, but that doesn't mean I couldn't.
But they don't cook or anything like that?
No, no, fires and, is, is, I mean, if you're trying to stay hidden, the last thing you want isn't a point of smoke pointing right to where you are, right?
That's a good point.
Yeah. Uh, so, no, they, they, and also fire means danger to them too. Every time they see fire is a matter of danger.
Tom, tell them about the peanut butter jar.
She was talking about leaving gifts. And my two favorite things to leave are apples and peanut butter. Apples because they're so good for them and they like them. Peanut butter because I love seeing those big fingers marks in the jar. It is so cool to see. Leave the lid on, they'll take it off. I mean, they're smarter than we are, they got better, stronger hands than we do. They'll take the lid off and they'll just scoop it out. You'll see those big fingerprints down that jar. It's, it's absolutely outrageous.
How'd they get here?
Huh?
I mean, were they always here or did...
Uh, they preceded us.
So they've been here?
Yeah, they're, they're about twenty thousand years beyond us. Fifteen thousand years, something like that, yeah. If you look at the DNA, okay, you take the mitochondrial DNA, that's DNA that comes from your matrilineal line, your mother, your grandmother, great-grandmother, right on back to the first of the species. And, uh, their mitochondrial DNA is pure human. So the mother of their species was human. The nuclear DNA, which you get half from your father, half from your mother, you put them together like a tall pea plant, a short pea plant, how many, you know, you did that in high school. Okay, there are non-human markers in that. The kicker there is twenty-three, two-point-three billion samples in Gen Bank is not there. We don't know what it is. Now that brings up the point, are they alien? It could be, but more likely, I think, they are prototypical human, something I had over against us of, of that type, that we don't have DNA on yet. I think they probably were proto-human and made it with a hu, close enough to mate with a human woman, and that's what spawned their species. Again, that's gospel according to Tom. Okay? I have no proof of that whatsoever. Okay? But, uh, that, that book that I showed you there has a full lineup of proof in it. We've always needed reproducible proof, evidence. Remember this too, you can't prove anything to anybody. All you can do is offer evidence. You offer enough evidence till that person has heard enough to say, "Yeah, that's true." That's proven to me. That's why we have twelve jurors on the jury panel. Okay? Because everybody requires a different level of proof. And it takes all twelve to agree to get a conviction, right? So same thing, same thing in our minds. I can't prove to you, but I can offer evidence. And boy, can I offer evidence. I have a teacher. His name was Akhenisha. I asked him if that's exactly it. He says, "No, that's just as close as you can come to pronouncing it." That's his footprint. Seventeen inches long. In all primates, your height is six point times, six-point-five times the length of your foot. So if you have a ten-inch foot, you're sixty-five inches tall. Again, the center of the bell curve, allowing for the natural variations. Seventeen inches, nine foot four inches, and he measures nine foot three. When I'm standing with him face-to-face, I'm looking at him right there, and I'm six foot four. Or I was when I could stand up. Yes?
Tom, tell them about your witnessing the twins being born.
Again, that's Roger Say. That's, uh, Roger said it was a young lady in B.C., daughter of the clan leader. She's the only one I've ever seen that has blue eyes. And she has a very unique head shape and then her hair, hair on her head looks like she's been to a barber shop. She's very unique. And, uh, I was talking to her, talking to Arla, my friend in Oklahoma, about her one time, that I'd just met her, just seen her. And Arla says, "I saw her." She says, "Let me get my notes." And she went and got her note, her journal, and read it back to me. It was, it reminded what I was gonna say. And so that was when she was there to meet Forstner, her mate. She was on, uh, one of Arla's land there then. But when she and Forstner mated, uh, a year later, year, a month, year and two months later, uh, she was giving birth and I was invited. This was in B.C. Fifteenth of January, twenty-fifteen, I'm sitting on a bank with fifteen male Sasquatch, watching birth of a baby. And her mother was in attendance. The baby came, and you never saw him, he's so cute in your life, just a little bundle of fur. First thing we do is take it down the creek and wash it. "Oh, did he let out a howl." Serves out the same, same effect as a spank on a buck. And then she went back to her again and I couldn't figure out what was going on. I was looking, I'm looking, looking, and then I heard Arla's voice in my ear. And I'm in B.C., she's in Oklahoma, she's, it's twins. And they delivered another one. One boy and one girl. And by September, I went back to, to B.C. for a reunion of our group up there, and I got to see them. They're nine years old now. And, uh, yeah, they're about yay high and full of hell as day is long. And, yeah, they're, they're a pair. But I got to see them. Yeah.
You said that's the only one you saw with blue eyes, what, normal eyes, brown?
Dark, dark brown, yeah. Mm-hmm. Yes, Barb?
Tom, how, what were the size of the babies that you saw?
He was about twenty-five, maybe twenty-six inches long. Yeah. Uh, the other babies I've seen are about that size too. But that's the only set of twins I've ever seen. Yeah.
Do they age at the same...
Yeah, pretty much. They, they'll live a little longer than we do, 'cause they eat better than we do. Okay? They don't have McDonald's.
They like sauce.
Yeah. Yeah, they eat pretty, pretty, uh, pretty good as compared to what we eat. So they'll live a nominal one-hundred years. There's, there's the answer to this question, why don't we ever find a body? Well, there's three hundred in the state of Washington. They live a hundred years. That means every year, three of them will die in seventy-two thousand square miles. Okay? That's number one. Number two, they bury their dead. And I've got pictures of graves, I can show you those. Okay? So you're not gonna find the remains, period. It's not gonna happen. First of all, number two, how many buried remains have you ever found? And there's twenty thousand of them in this state. Yeah?
Yeah, but they're animals.
Yeah. How many cougars have you ever found, the bodies of? They just disappear. University of North Carolina did a study. They staked out a deer and see how long it would take for it to, to disappear. One week it was gone. One week. Okay, questions? Questions of any of us? Yes?
I'm curious if anyone who lives where you're seeing them frequently, like the Barb, I guess it was, was speaking, have you ever tried planting just a random garden for them to utilize? I mean, just full of stuff to see what they would utilize?
Let me tell you a story, Arla, this is from Arla, our friend in Oklahoma. She planted these gigantic watermelon, okay, these huge watermelon. And of course, she was watching them day by day, you know, as they grew bigger and bigger and bigger. And then she was just ready to pick one, went out and it was gone. Next one in line, she's watching it come up. It got one little thing they watched for, the dies, had died, it was gone. She said, "Okay, guys, this has gotta stop. I need to have this garden for, for my family too. Now, I can split it with you, so fifty-fifty rules of effect. You can have half, but leave half for me." They now pick half of each tree and leave the other half. They take half the berries on the, on the berry vines and leave the other half. They bury strict, with a fifty percent role. Yes?
If you put like an apple out in the woods, you know, could you, do they know if you got like a trail cam or a game cam?
Oh, yes. Oh, yes.
So you're like, they won't go around and...
No, they won't come around.
There's a camera?
Yeah. And don't try to trick them. Don't hide a camera. Yeah, they'll just stay away from them and they'll stay away from you.
So they kinda know, you gotta be cool.
They know your heart.
Yeah.
They know it's in your heart.
I got a question.
Yes?
They always talk about cross mating. Now, he mates with a female, do you ever have any instances of it?
Pardon me?
Where a male mates with a female Sasquatch?
Well, I'm too old, I don't remember that. No, I have not.
But it's always the other way, you know?
I don't, I don't know that. I, I, I've never seen any, any instance of it. It may, it may have happened, but it's nothing that I know anything about. Okay? Here's your chance, you got the old man. Ask Barb too, she's, she's, she's got this going too.
There's gotta be some good stories out in this audience.
I have a funny story that I can share, uh, about a game camera. So, um, we were doing some, yeah, renovation on our, it was a sign detecting. And, um, so my husband had a ladder that isn't there for, you know, his work to, just about every night. And he said, um, this is an area that we were getting, um, this camera, we're getting a lot of like random motion and sounds. So he said, "I'm gonna put our game camera, I'm gonna attach it to the, to the ladder and kinda hide it and I bet they won't, they won't know." And I'm like, "Okay." I'm thinking, "Good luck. I hope it doesn't chase them away." What they did is they threw, they threw like little white homes and growled all night long. Every time I would turn, like, yeah, so that's, uh, they do, they do, they would just throw this at that.
I have a story about, uh, putting out things for them. When, uh, we first started gifting, people told me to put trail cams out. So we got a trail cam and we put it out in the woods and it took a couple of, uh, practice shots of my dog, and I think we got one picture of an elephant. After that, it was all white-out pictures. So we took it and we put it underneath a bridge, thinking that, well, the sun must have been shining on the thing and making the pictures all white-out. And it just stopped working altogether under the bridge. So, uh, we went and got a brand-new trail cam, put that one out. It took one practice shot photo and it, it died. It never worked again. So we quit putting cameras out. So we started putting, uh, sound recorders out. We put them in a sealed plastic bag at, near my gifting area. And, uh, the first time, you could hear the footsteps walk up, you hear the package get picked up, rattled around, and the recorder gets shut off. Second time I put it out there, you didn't hear the footsteps coming, you just hear the package get picked up and shut off. And after that, you didn't hear anything, they just got shut off. So I quit doing that. So then, uh, a couple months went by and I was at my cabin up in Greenwater, and I was hearing vocals across the road. And out of respect, I was no longer putting anything out in their area, but my yard is my yard. So I was leaving and I thought, you know, I'm just gonna put a recorder here in a secluded spot and see what happens. This is my yard, it's not intruding on them. So I turned on the recorder, I put it in a spot where nobody could see it, and I left. And I came back four hours later and it was gone. I found it on the ground several feet away, turned off and covered in dried mud. And that was the last time I ever put a recorder out. So now I go out in the woods and I walk along with my camera and I say, "I'm recording." And they give me the things that they want me to have. So be respectful, it goes a lot farther.
Barb, tell them where you live.
I'm up in Greenwater, right on the Greenwater River. So, um, another thing about the duck imitation, before I knew the Sasquatch, Sasquatch were out there, one night I was up in the woods looking for a missing cat, and I heard an owl, you know, the, "Hoo-hoo, hoo-hoo, hoo-hoo." Except he finished it with a deep growl. "Hoo-hoo, hoo-hoo, hoo." "Rrrrr." And knowing that birds can't growl, my blood ran cold and I went back to the cabin. Anything else?
That's good. Yeah, we, we get a lot of those, uh, five-hundred-pound critters that are, uh, talking to us at night when, uh, when nobody else is around. Uh, it's, 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 you're a dusk and about sleeping out. Yeah, we do it four times a year, five times a year. Uh, just go up Peter, Barb, group of us, and, uh, I can't camp anymore, but it's sure a lot of fun. And you never know what's gonna happen. They come right into camp. I was back in Georgia a few years ago, and, uh, sitting around a campfire, eighteen of us, and two of them came right to our campfire, standing right behind me, it's a campfire. And walked, followed them back into the brush, and there was another one waiting back there, the third one, larger one. But yeah, two of them came, came right to our campfire. And I get, uh, I get called a liar, a liar a lot over that, I was, we just called eighteen people liars, including a Georgia Superior Court judge. He, he lost his marriage over that one. His wife couldn't handle it and left. But he couldn't deny what he saw. Yeah? That same camp, I'm laying in my tent, reading, and a little light going, and they're running back and forth and through camp. And this is ninety-nine percent of the time this is kids. This is the youth. Boom, 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 through camp. Boom, 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 back again. And, uh, all of a sudden he stopped, right out of the side of my tent. And so I'm waiting for him to run again, and he didn't run. So I looked over back in my head, out the window of the, of the tent, and there he is staring, looking at me, with his hairy face. He looked at me, his eyes got about yay big, away he went. They are so much fun. You've gotta get to know them, you really do. People always, always ask me, "How do you get to, how do you guys see them?" I've got a proven method, and it's really works, but it's difficult. I take my folding chair, I've got an ice chest full of fried chicken hips and Diet Pepsi and boiled eggs, and my Kindle. And I go out and I find a good spot, chilling in the water, open my chair, put my butt down in it, open the Diet Pepsi, grab a boiled egg and a chicken hip, open my Kindle, and sit there and read, 'cause they'll get curious, come and walk and know, know why I'm sitting there. And that's where you hear that, "Whistle." And you know they're there. And they'll do it, because they get curious. That's how I got, first started seeing them. Uh, my degree's in logging engineering. That said, I have never worked a day in my life as an employee for a company as a logging engineer. I got out of college and found out what they paid. But I did a lot of consulting work. And I could make as much in a weekend doing a consulting job as I could in a month as an employee. Okay? And so, bridge, bridge sites were, were my main thing that I, that and property lines. But bridge sites, uh, in this state... But bridge sites, in this state, if you're going to cross a stream used by an adage, "If fish runs," that's salmon and steel, that fish go over the ocean and come back to spawn, you have to have a permit from the state. In order to get that permit, you have to file a report. Soil type, rock type, stream flow, wet, dry, all of this stuff. And where you're going to cross, what you're going to do to protect the stream. Well, they'd hire me to do that. And I'd hike in, and of course, their company engineers got the ones that were alongside the road. They hired me as a consultant for the ones that were six miles off the road, back in the timber. So I'd hike in, sit there and do my measurements. And first time I hiked out and found out I'd forgotten the measurement, had to hike back in the next day to get one measurement, I decided something else had to be done there. And I'd sit down and draw it out, just roughly, just to make sure I had all of the measurements that I needed before I left. And that's when they started coming in. The first thing I heard was "whistle." That's, you know, I've got the big guy in my sight over here. And that's what they do. And I'd see peeking around a tree at me. For a long time, I thought they only had one eye, it just shifted from side to side. But nobody ever gets that joke. Not a joke, huh? Yeah, so that's how I got started. How did you get started? What got you started in it?
I'm still trying to refer to counter. I'm curious, if a person's out, you know, no matter what they're doing, if you're just, if you're out and about, because I have questions about, you know, how they're dispersed in the state too, or are they just clusters or areas? But if you're out and happen to be fortunate enough to run onto one, or they run onto you purposely, whatever, is a person safe?
Absolutely.
Because that's the feeling I get, you know, I mean, I'm sure it would make the heart race, but...
I'm almost eighty-one years old. Do you think you have a valid Sasquatch? Let me know, I'll come stand between you and them. It's a matter of respect. As long as you show them respect, you're never going to have a problem in the world. Now, can you get someplace where you shouldn't be? Oh, yeah. Get them around mama with their little ones. I don't care what species, you're going, you're, you're in a bad place. So when that happened to me, what did I do? I backed up, left them alone, went somewhere else, and came back in there when I needed to, next time. The last thing, as a, as a species that does not want to be seen, the last thing they're going to do is harm the dominant species in the land. Okay? Look how well it did the Native Americans, which is also why I have no desire to ever prove their existence. Look at our government's track record with indigenous species. The worst thing you could do, because the first thing they're going to try to do is put them on a reservation, and they aren't going to listen. You know? Reservation and... Yeah, that too. I love kids at these things, because they ask the best questions. They really do, I mean, they're professional question answer askers, you know? And they do, they always come up with the best questions.
Should I tell them my, my little story?
Yeah.
It started with the convention that you did here in Eton, the Eton plot convention that you did, they couldn't hear Eton plot. That was, that was the beginning of it. I went home and I eventually said, "Give me some proof," you know, because I'm up in the woods all by myself, five acres of woods all around. And so I drive out to my gate, and here's this cross in the woods, right next by the gate, I'd never seen it before. So I thought, "Am I just seeing something that wasn't there the whole time?" I don't, you know, didn't quite believe it. So like a few days later, I had a little chair that I had next to the woods, and I'd sit in there and talk to him, that's when I asked about the proof. And so I went back and I said, "Is somebody sure could give you some more proof?" Next day, I walk out and this little dead tree had turned into pyramids. And it had been dead for two years, had no needles on it. It didn't, it went up and up and stayed. You can't do that with a dead tree. It breaks. And he turned it into these circle pyramids, and it stayed like that. And I got up first thing in the morning, I saw it across the circular driveway back by the wood, right in front of the chair. And it was like, "What?" It was proof. How could that happen? The next day, it fell apart. So, you know, talking to him like you say.
Well, it's always, the first thing I do, ever have any kind of a sighting or anything else, I always introduce myself and, and talk to them. "Hi, I'm Tom, I'd sure like to get to know you, you know, have we met before?" Just like you'd talk to your neighbor.
Yeah, that's what I did. And I couldn't believe like that results, and just almost instantly.
I'm going to tell a story here. Kathy's not here to defend herself, so it's her fair game. We were camped in Northern California at a place called Alt Meadows. This is on the head of, very head of Blue Creek, which is one ridge over from Bluff Creek, where the Patterson-Gimmell film was filmed. Okay? The last night we were to be in camp, one of the last two nights anyway. She and I sat up at the fire yakking late. We had had sighting after sighting, face-to-face sightings, the whole twelve days we were there. And I got up, headed back to my tent. I got a, had a mattress in my tent, it's about that high. My partner Sue called up my princess mattress, so I couldn't be able to pee, I guess. And I was just getting in bed, I was just, I'd taken my nightly meds and everything, got undressed, and all of a sudden I hear, "Tom, Tom, Tom, come help me, I can't move." "Hold on, Kathy, I'll be right there." So I put my pants back on, didn't even put shoes on. And we're at fifty-five hundred foot elevation, and it was cold at night, okay? And I walked out there, and here she is, she's bent over about halfway and locked, cannot move. And I walked up to her, I said, "What's the matter?" She's, he was right between me, and it's only ten feet to her tent, and he was between her and her tent. And she walked right in on him. And I looked, and he was behind the tent, inside, underneath this, this foregoverned cedar tree there. I was, "Okay, I'll take care of this." I was, "Hi, big guy, how you doing tonight?" And he's apologizing to her, she's apologizing to him for scaring him, and neither one of them are listening to the others. Okay? By now, I was, "I've got a control, under control now, so you can release her." That's a safety thing. Okay? If he'd allowed her, allowed her to turn around and run away, there's drop-off twenty feet deep in that area. She could have run into one of those and killed herself very easily. By locking her up like that, it allowed him to get away, then he releases her, and she can go about her way. It's that simple. I told her, "Just get your cack out of your tent and throw up mine tonight." And she did. But you know, that shook her up. We had a talk about it, just was the last week, the week before she was here, and we talked about that. She's just now figuring out that that was... Same group of people coming back from town one day, had to fill my propane from my tent heater, like I said, the nights were cold. And mile post fourteen, a gal from England was sitting next to me in the car, I was driving, and Arla was in the backseat. If you get the idea of Arla and I hanging all out together, we do. And she's my sis. And we're both descended from Guthrie's in Scotland, so we really are related. And come around a curve, mile post fourteen, here's two Sasquatch standing right in the road just from the car. By the time I got the car stopped, we were about fifteen to twenty feet from them. Jackie, the gal from England, she's "Bigfoot!" About blew the window out of my car. They took two steps, turned, took two steps over the bank. As they went over the bank, the leadman says, "I'm the one you know as Patty, this is my son." And it's his picture that's hanging on my wall in there now. And so we let them go. From mile post fourteen to mile post thirty-four, where our camp was, twenty miles, Jackie convinced herself she had not seen two Sasquatch standing in the road. She'd seen two Mexican drug mules wearing long-haired ghillie suits, backpacks with flip flops on. Because when they, when they turned, stepped away, you could see the awesomeness pads on the bottom of their feet very plainly, as the feet turned up. Another thing, difference between the Sasquatch pace and ours, when we walk, our legs come up twenty-three degrees, theirs come up fifty-seven degrees. Try walking that way sometime. Doesn't work. These footprints you followed all the way in here, those are from Patterson-Gimmell film. Those are spaced the same distance as the track, as Patty's trackway was when I grabbed the walk. So if you want to see how easy you walk as smoothly as she did, try walking that.
And look back over your shoulder.
Yeah, and personally, everybody falls over when they try that one. And that happened with Bob. Bob was still on horseback, Roger was following her filming, and Bob was still on horseback, and he crossed the creek and stepped down off his horse. And she turned and looked back at him as he stepped down off his horse. That's that look back scene. That's how we know she's female. There's been so many tests done, if you want, if you want further proof on that one, go to Bill Munn's, Bill Munn's reports on YouTube, he's got a whole series. Bill Munn's ran the school for costume making back in the sixties and seventies in Hollywood. So I think he knows something about making costumes. He analyzed that film, not frame by frame, layer by a layer of emotion within the frames. And I guarantee you, that film is real. Aside from the fact that Bob Gimmell's one of my best friends in the world, and there's no truer man ever lived than him. He's one hundred percent cowboy, stands about that tall, if he's got his boots on. We made quite a picture together. But he's honest. And you know what they called him, what they did to him and his family? If they'd done that a hundred and fifty years ago, they'd have gotten shot. You didn't call a cowboy a liar. His honor was number one. It's still that way with us. Comprendes? It's your time, why am I talking? Anybody have any questions?
I could say so. My name's Peter, and I'm part of Barb's campup group. I had an encounter up Lake Salander, I'm actually from Salander. And it got me interested, and so I reached out to Barb, I actually came down there, figured out where she was, that they had her, so I went down there. I've been hanging out with a campup group for, since what, fourteen? And, you know, they do like five campups a year, and I go out by myself, and I don't know how many hundreds of encounters like that, you know, hundreds of them. And once you kind of know what to look for, and they know that you're not there trying to catch them and all that stuff, they should look themselves to you. They're, they're not, period, they're not, they can do things that are just minor. And how they do it, I don't know. But there was a question earlier about human hybrids. And I know at least three cases. One case was called the story of Zon, which is near the Caspian Sea, where an alba was captured and had several children fomented. And they actually have, and it's called the story of Zon, and you can go look it up. And her offspring was able to reproduce, you know? There's other stories, there's more evidence to support that. I actually am very interested in, it's really hard to prove to somebody with a photograph or video or whatever. So you know, I wondered about Patty, and so I just went there, and I had an encounter, you know? And we celebrated Bob's birthday and fifteenth anniversary and everything else like that, it was amazing. Bob's a great guy, and he is honest as the day long. I mean, if you say he saw it, believe it, he saw it. And what I'm interested in, this is something that most people are intrigued by, is how do I actually experience it for myself? You know, and that's what I'm interested in. One good way is, look on a map and find anything that's called Scoopum. And, you know, Scoopum Meadows, or Scoopum Falls, or Scoopum Mendlet, you know, there's a Scoopum Creek, you know? That's a really good way, because somebody probably named it after, you know, I was studying down there, Crater Lake, and just found this little pond, and I zoomed in on it, you know, and I thought there would be Bigfoot there, and it's called Scoopum Pond, you know? And so that's the first thing. The second thing is, don't try to catch them. Just be, be yourself, be open-hearted, don't try to sneak, because they can pick up on that, you know, this type of thing. So for me, there is a gray period between our daylight hours and their nighttime. And, and this is when I get most of my encounters, is after the sun goes down, before it gets dark, they come out and start getting active. So, you know, I'll do like a head-saw and griddle thing with flashlights, and I'll hang them from trees into an area, and go find a place to sit inside that area where if they could, if, if I could see them, they could see me, kind of like by a root ball or behind a tree. And I'll just sit there and be really quiet, and, you know, they, you know, you watch the tree, and you can see them coming around and looking at you and stuff like that. And then, of course, once it gets dark, you can't find your way back to your truck, and that's why you hang the flashlights, because now you just can't, you know, make sure you can find your way home. And like, you know, you know, if you want to be rich, hang around rich people. If you want to be smart, hang around smart people. If you want to have Bigfoot encounters, hang around people that have Bigfoot encounters, right? It's that simple, you know? So, you know, I don't know how many dozens of times I've camped with Barb and Tom and Bob and all these people. And, you know, they are absolutely helpful. And it kind of changes your whole view, and I'm not scared of them, they're kind of fun, you know, you catch what I've got there, you know, that type of thing, and you laugh about it, and then you don't freak out, and you just experience the moment. Because I remember a person, I think it was Barb's friends, said, "When you look into their eyes, it's like looking into the universe." So I think that's really incredible.
One thing you want to be careful of is be respectful in all ways. Respect means everything to them, and to me, actually. Okay? You can, I see so many, so many people, they've created a career on nothing. Peter Burns, big name in Sasquatch world, never saw one. Saw five tracks in his lifetime, yet he's regarded as a most knowledgeable person. So many people. I saw one on the mountainside going up the hill. This is the way we live, this is the way they have their babies, this is the way... This is the way they live, this is the way they have their babies, this is the way... No, until you do the Diane Fossey, Jane Goodall thing, you don't have any idea of that. Till you've sat with them at a funeral. Till you've sat with them at a birth. Then you start to know. But you don't know at all. You know? If their knowledge was piled up to the top of this ceiling, I'm right about here. Yeah? But, oh, do I have a lot of fun stuff to learn. Yeah? My teacher's got a daughter, her name is Tarannika, and she's a redhead. Well, I guess you'd say a red body, wouldn't you? She's red everywhere. I took my artist friend, Alex Evans, with me up there one time, and she was with her father. And she, shy, she's just a little gal, then, about seven or eight years old, and she's peeking around with legs at us. And she was so excited, because there was a human woman with the same color hair she had. And that one, "That's our word." So if anything I have is paid to do it, you know? It's what life's all about. It's not about who's got the biggest house, biggest car. It's about what's in your heart. Now, is there any other questions? Anything I can ask or do for anybody?
(mimicking a baby crying)
Yes.
I'm curious, you know, just thinking of the state of Washington, for instance, the size of it, you were hitting on this earlier, you say there's approximately, you know, plus or minus three hundred dispersed across that. You know, that makes the, I mean, just in pure statistical chance of, of encounter, I mean astronomically off the chart, that you won't see one. So are they evenly dispersed, or do they go to areas, or...
No, they, no, they're not. You gotta, you gotta remember, they gotta go where food is.
Okay.
That's the first thing you look for, is there food there, and is there cover there? Okay? That, and that's where you start looking. Find water, food, and cover. And that's where, that's where they'll be. You're not gonna find, oh, yeah, they show up occasionally out in the middle of, you know, sand dunes.
Lane lines.
Yeah, yeah. But get in the Blue Mountains and see what you find. Get the Cascades and see what you find. Where there's food, where there's elk, where there's deer, where there's berries, where there's fish in the rivers. Yeah?
So berries, look, berries, of course, you said deer and such, around berries, other forage stuff, I mean, just, uh, you know, like, so typically, it seems like a lot of times that would be, like, you mentioned closer water, just like, you know, most game that you would think of.
Mm-hmm.
Not that they're game, don't get me wrong, I just mean that animals use waterways, it's where things grow, where things count. Is there other things to watch for, berries and stuff, to...
Yeah, from November to February, look for them on the beaches.
Beaches?
Because the minus tides are at night, and they can feed out there, you know, with impunity at eleven o'clock at night, the minus tide, and that's where they are. There is more protein per acre grown in tideland than anyplace else in the world. Okay, so that's why they're there. The question was asked about swimming in the ocean. Oh, yeah. Got some gorgeous pictures of them swimming between the islands up in San Juan's. Mm-hmm. And I'm always available. You know where I live, my room's easy to find. Show up at the door, uh, front door and say something about Sasquatch to point you.
How, how do they handle predators?
Predators?
Like, they're these like bear, two cats, stuff?
You gotta see what they do with a bear. Yeah, yeah.
Really?
Yeah, they, they'll take a, take a lot, come down on the head of a bear, and just, "Wow."
So they just mess with them, you know?
Yeah, bears don't like to go around them.
No, I don't like them.
Yeah. Grizz might, he thought, doesn't have a lot of brains anyway, and he's the top of the food chain, and, and everything. But, uh, uh, black bears just are no, no competition to them at all. Yeah, yeah. Yes?
Tom, how do they work with coyotes, like, or should...
I'm sorry, I couldn't hear you.
Do they work with coyotes?
I've heard that, I've never seen it, uh, but I couldn't say it was, that's untrue. It's just something I've never seen. Tell you a little story about that. I was at a conference one time, and Autumn Williams, I don't know if you remember Autumn Williams, she had a TV show for a season called, I don't know, Wild Outdoor, or something like that. At any rate, they were looking for, stir Bigfoot, and her mother, uh, wrote a book. And she lived up in this area, not, not very far from here. And, uh, she was talking at this conference, and talking about having, watching tracks appear with nothing making them, just the tracks appearing across the field. And, uh, at the break, I had probably fifteen, twenty people come up and ask me, "Is that true? Does that happen?" I says, "This has never happened to me." But, you know, that's, that's Sally's story, you know, it happened to her, you'd have to talk to her about that. That same winter, uh, Dr. Igor Bortsev was over from Russia, and he and I were hanging out together, we were down out in McMinnville, Oregon, and, uh, a piece of land down there. And he and our host there were going for a walk up the river, and I had some writing I had to do. And so I put a pile of apples on this flat rock there, and sat down in the car, was gonna write, and went sound asleep. And woke up twenty minutes later, and there were five apples left on that pile of apples left. And I got out, I was gonna take a picture of it, my camera didn't work, fresh batteries. So I looked, and it's a little square across there with, uh, salmonberry. You know what a salmonberry square looks like in the wintertime?
What's that?
Salmonberry, oh, it's muddy and, yeah. And I'm seeing these two such tracks appearing across this mud flat, side by side, walking away from me. I was, "I'm sure God, I didn't say that was impossible." Keep an open mind. Even if it's something that you're not familiar with now, keep an open mind, because someday it may happen to you. Okay? Don't, don't ever say, "That's impossible." Because I haven't found anything yet that's impossible, mentally.
Tom, how do they fish?
Uh-huh?
How do they fish?
How do they fish? Another story. I was on Goodman Creek, on the west end of the Olympic Peninsula, it's about halfway between, um, Bogashill River and the Hole River. And it was, it was, um, late season elk, archery elk season. And I was there hunting elk with my bow. And, uh, I had a really good stand, there was just a series of beaver dams right below me. And first thing that came by, there's some coyotes up the trail, then two timber wolves came up the trail. And I know the Department of Fish and Game would tell you, "There are no wolves on the Olympic Peninsula." If they got unstuck from their truck seat, they might know better than that. And I've seen them twice. But a little later, here came, I hear splashing in the, in the beaver dams, beaver ponds. And here come the Sasquatch up the bottom of the beaver pond, and then a second one. And what he was doing, was running a salmon up next to the dam, then he'd reach in and grab it. And when he picked it up, he'd squeeze it, and some of them he'd throw away, and others of them, his thumbnail looked like a knife blade, it was shaped, and he just slid it right down the stomach with that thumbnail, and dumped the eggs or, or out, and he'd eat those right there. And it took me about twenty minutes watching him before I finally realized what was happening. If he squeezed them and nothing came out, he threw them back. Those respond out. If he squeezed it and neither sperm or eggs come out, they were fresh, and he kept those. So, intelligence? Anything else? I wanna thank everybody for coming. This has been such a fun time, totally important to...
Tom, I think, I think there's some goodies back here.
Yes, there are goodies back there. Welcome to them.
Yes.
I know, yeah, Natalie brought some, and I thought the cook was gonna bring some up.
They did.
They did, okay. Super, absolutely. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.